Good evening and welcome to the school district of the city of Dearborn for our regular school board meeting. Today is Thursday, April 11th, 2024. It's a couple of minutes after 7:00 PM. I'll call this meeting to order. Can we get a roll call, please?
Pat Diambrosio here. Roxanne McDonald.
Excused.
Adele Mosep.
Here.
Mary Petrikov.
Here.
Jim Thorpe.
Here.
Irene Watts.
Excused.
President Berry.
Here. Next item, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. This evening, we have Mr. Chad Farhat, Principal of McCullough Uness. School will introduce students who will lead the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job.
Good evening, President Berry, board members. Thank you for having us here today. Today, we have a couple of McCullough Uness finest students here. We have Miriam Baydun and Zainab Mustafa, just to share with you some of the good things that are happening in their lives at McCullough Uness and at the building. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Two things I would like to highlight going on in our school recently are our 7th grade science night where over 70 students presented their science fair projects to family and judges, which I took home frisbee. Also, we held a candy giant last month, and we were able to collect 2,000 cans weighing over 900 pounds to donate to Glenners. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Miriam Baydun. I go to Uness on my 8th grader, and I want to highlight two things that's been going on this year. So last week, the NJHS program, they planned and hosted an Aftar dinner that was a fundraiser towards Palestine. Fifty people came. They attended and donated. We made over $500, and every single penny went towards Palestine. Another thing I want to highlight is the murals. We have one mural going on at the Uness side, and it's about unity. Another mural that's on the elementary side about positivity, and one that's in the works about growth mindset.
Great job. Thank you. Good work. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Before we go on to the next item, I want to say something. I usually don't get involved in this, but I feel like I have to. And I know many, many other community members in Dearborn are making the same comment. There was a gathering last week in Dearborn on Friday. There was at least one speech and some chants from the audience. I'm not gonna repeat the sickening words that were said, repeated. I know it's all over social media, and I'm seeing the heads nod up and down. You know what I'm talking about. I just want to tell you, as an Arab-American, as a Muslim-American living in Dearborn here, those remarks do not represent myself, does not represent probably 99.9% of the Arab-Americans and Muslim-Americans living in Dearborn. It's okay to hold, we live in a country where it's okay to hold your elected officials accountable, but it's not okay to do, to say or do what happened last Friday. Just want to say that. And in condoning these actions, we reaffirm our commitment to Dearborn as a city that embodies diversity, the city that opened up its arms to all irrespective of the background. Those views have no place in the fabric of our community. And I can say, I always heard my grandfather and my father say this, and now my children and grandchildren are repeating after them. God bless America. That being said, next item, please.
Superintendent's update.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the community. As you are aware, I am not Dr. Malako. Mr. Dr. Malako is under the weather, and so we didn't want him to be here. So I will fill in for him today. The first one I have is a moment of silence. Unfortunately, we had some members of the community pass away. We had Sundis Showcare, a student in our preschool physically impaired program at Cotter, passed away on March 29th of 2024. Salman Salameh, noon hour supervisor at McDonald, passed away on April 1st, 2024, and Norman Keith Richard, the trustee Roxanne's McDonald's father, passed away. So we can have a brief moment of silence. Thank you. Onto some happy things for some people. We have a lot of retirements. We had Arthur Abbey III with four and three quarters years of service, Dawn Ajemi, 23 years of service, Cynthia Alvarado, 27 years of service, Susanisa Bleszyski, 23 years of service, Jane Dewald, 25 and three quarters years of service, John Forster, 29 years of service, Cheryl Fritz, 12 and a half years of service, Michael Gass, 25 years of service, Amy Guiz, 27 years of service, Dana Hanner, 29 and three quarters years of service, Maria Uliano, 25 years of service, Isabella Karaf, 10 and a half years of service, Arsola Kiss, 25 years of service, Catherine Lee, 28 years of service, Adrian Muckla, 29 years of service, Jack Miller, 25 years of service, Mark Police, 26 years of service, Brian Riley, 29 years of service, Starr Sleeman, 25 years of service, and Ricardo Sortrez, 29 and three quarters years of service. So a round of applause for all those there. And it's not unusual at this time of year to have a lot because the school year is coming to a close, and a lot of people give us advance notice so we can plan importantly. On the non-agenda items, I have a few. This is Arab-American Heritage Month that we celebrate. Happy Ramadan for those that celebrated it. Occupational therapy, autism, and school library month. And those are the things that we're gonna be celebrating this month. So that ends my superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Recognition and acknowledgements. Dearborn Board of Education, regular P-12 meeting. Commendations, sorry.
Commendations to Technology and Media Services Director, Mr. Bob Attie, who was nominated by the Michigan Department of Education to serve on the NAEP Advisory Board Panel. The NAEP is a nationally administered assessment that takes place in randomized schools throughout the United States each year. The NAEP Advisory Board Panel recommends ways to improve the experience for staff and students during the administration for the 2024 to 2025 school year test. Templates created by Mr. Attie will be shared with the NAEP Advisory Board Panel and can assist with organization of requirements, identifying key contacts in buildings, and developing redundant support in the event that a staff member is absent on the testing day.
Commendations to the 600 district teachers who are nominated for an Alberta Mirrorhead Teacher of the Year Award. The Dearborn Area Chamber of Commerce will announce the five winners on April 18th. Commendations as well to a few of our outstanding substitute teachers from EDU staff, including Sahar Anka, Maria Khalil Baydun, Zainab Dayek, Renee Jordan, Sahar Naim, and Suzanne Riegel. These subs were nominated to be included in promotional videos produced by EDU staff. Commendation to the following Edsel Ford High School students who received superior ratings at the MSBOA State and Soul and Ensemble Competition. Tyler Sharum, Jacob Brown, Marius Gruther, Marcus Williams, Sterling Deller, Ryan Helka, Trinity Jacques, Marcus Madulla, Victor Belazik, Dahlia Elrouz, and Sarah Perdevine.
Commendations to the Dearborn Center for Math, Science, and Technology Students who participated in the Science and Engineering Fair of Metro Detroit in March. Congratulations to Hassan Adrees, who took first place in Plant Sciences, and to Lujana Almori, who took second place in System Software. Both qualified to participate in the state science fair in April. Commendations to the Dearborn Unified Figure Skating Team on its success on the recent Michigan, at the recent Michigan High School Figure Skating Championships in South Gate. Dearborn High Junior Jillian Furlow and Edsel Ford High sophomore Molly Holland were silver medalists in the artistic duet category. Furlow and Dearborn High freshman Emily Skinner also had top-five finishes in the preliminary ice dance category. Edsel Ford Senior Kayden Scratch earned points with her artistic solo, and Edsel Ford Junior Olivia Mecklen was fifth in gold ice dance and fourth in freestyle skating. Overall, Dearborn Unified placed 13th out of 31 high school teams. More than 200 skaters from all over Michigan competed in this event.
Commendations to Dearborn High Film Students who received 10 nominations from the Michigan Chapter of the National Academy of Television Arts and Sciences. Student Jacob Head was included in six of those 10 nominations, including awards for directing, writing, filming, and editing.
Before you leave, please introduce yourself and what school you represent.
I'm Donna Shamas. I'm from Dearborn High School.
Pioneer's.
And I'm Julius Owens. I'm also from Dearborn High School.
Also a pioneer. Thank you very much. Great job. Next item, please.
Acknowledgement of donations.
Good evening, all.
Evening.
The following donations have been offered to the school district. Acceptance of these donations are requested at this time. A donation of $778.50 has been offered to Michael Berry Career Center, Dearborn, Edsel, Howe, Lori, Nowland, Smith, Snow, Stout, and Whitmore Bull Schools by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for Field Day. A donation of $400 has been offered to Salina Intermediate School by Abad Maori to be used for PVIS student incentives and awards. A donation of $500 has been offered to Miller Elementary School by Abdul Nasr Alau to be used for Eid celebration. A donation for $1,144.60 has been offered to Salina Elementary School by Access to be used to purchase supplies for student celebrations. A donation of $199.10 has been offered to Salina Elementary School by Amal Kayed to be used to purchase snacks for March Israding Month Country Fair. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you to all of our generous community members. Next item, please.
Approval of minutes. Finance Committee meeting, March 11th, 2024, and the regular P-12 meeting, March 11th, 2024. Recommended action, make any necessary corrections and move approval of these minutes.
So moved.
Support.
Motion moved by Trustee Thorpe, supported by Trustee Petrikov. Are there any corrections of minutes? Are there any objections to the motion? Hearing none. Please attach a unanimous vote in affirmative. Next item, please.
Special reports. Green schoolyards. Ms. Susan Stanley, Emma Amid, and Mohammed Abashallah.
Good evening, President Berry, trustees, Mr. Wall. Thank you so much for this opportunity to share this green schools initiative, which is now becoming a reality. So we'd like to share just a few things. First of all, our belief is every child should experience the joy and benefits of nature regardless of where they live. And so the Dearborn Public Schools' Green Schoolyard support 21st century education, promote children's health, well-being, and joy, and function as ecologically rich community environments that connect children and their neighborhoods to the natural world. So in other words, we are committed to bringing childhood back outdoors. We're gonna show a video right now that a newcomer made over at the intermediate school, which really tells the story of our community and why we're so passionate about this Green Schoolyards initiative. So that is Salina, but that is not our future. And so that is why we have such great visionary plans that we're gonna talk about. So in 2020, there was a grant, I know you're aware of, of cities connecting children to nature. And what we were able to do was we were to connect, we were able to connect with cities across the country that brought different entities together to make it a reality to have green schoolyards. And the more we talked, the more we realized that if you can do it in San Antonio, you can do it in New York, you can do it in Boston, you can do it in Grand Rapids, we certainly can do it in Dearborn. So we had grant partners where we began was with Dearborn Public Schools, the city of Dearborn, and Access. And then we created a Green Schools Coalition, and that was community involvement, which focused on volunteerism. We had a strategic plan with a lot of community input. We had a schoolyard design and fundraising. So at your leisure, there is a video that talks about what a green schoolyards look like, but these are just pictures of what it looks like at Salina Intermediate and Salina Elementary.
Greetings. My name is Iman Ahmed. I am the principal of our Salina Intermediate. And I don't have to go in depth or in detail to explain all the benefits of just being outside in nature, having the green schoolyards in our community. It's gonna start at Salina, but it's something that we kind of want to pilot at Salina and expand to other schools across the district. We know what it does to stormwater mitigation and helping the city of Dearborn with that. As you know, with the recent flooding some few years ago and the devastation that it's caused. So that's something that it's gonna definitely help with. Air filtration with planting more trees, tree canopy, and of course, helping with the heat. The students academic, adults' academic well-being as well, their health, their social and emotional and behavior. So there's just so many benefits to just being outside in nature. And I'm so glad with, to have Sue on my side because you really have to believe in this mission and vision. And not just Sue Stanley, but the rest of the district led by Glenn Malako, the board, staff, Dr. Jill Chokel, who has been amazing to work with, Mrs. Lemis Surur, and of course, our partners.
Beautiful.
That we're gonna be talking about in a little bit.
A picture of Salina Elementary now. And this is Salina Elementary in a not-too-distant future. As a matter of fact, Shala will be breaking ground sometime in June. This is, and in your booklets, you will see, these are this great design that our architectural landscapers put together for us. And what's exciting about this is these are people that really understand early childhood. And we decided to start with a kindergarten playground first because those are the children that'll impact the most for them because they understand about balance and vestibular stimulation and all that other really good stuff.
And then, so we wanted to start with, as you mentioned, with lower elementary, and then we're gonna move up to upper elementary and expand our community center grounds, our green spaces with outdoor pavilions, learning, more learning spaces, expanding the garden and playscapes. And we're really here today. It's not because of us, but really to thank our partners who are standing behind us. I'm gonna ask them all to kind of come around and just gather around the podium.
And so we're gonna have some over here and some over there, and then we'll call you up separately. So thank you.
We share our most profound appreciation and gratitude to our supporters and partners of this green schoolyard, beginning with the district and of course, the Board of Education. A special thank you to Mark Andrews, Lemis Surur, Dr. Malako, and our board members for supporting the green schoolyards. We have many green schoolyard partners who have taken the time this evening to be with us. And to honor each and to share our appreciation, we are asking each to speak for just a brief moment. Starting with the city of Dearborn, we thank Mayor Abdullah Hamud for supporting green schoolyards and our initial grant efforts, especially the Departments of Parks and Recreation, Public Works, Public Health, and Economic Development. So Regina Sisdrunk is going to be here in representation of the city of Dearborn.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Good evening, Dearborn school board members. I am pleased to be here. Following the historic flood in June 2021, the city of Dearborn's Economic Development Department has received approximately $27 million from the Department of Housing and Urban Development for disaster recovery efforts. The Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Program, try saying that 10 times, was designed to help cities and states recover from presidentially declared disaster areas, particularly in low-income areas. The city of Dearborn prioritized using the funds toward efforts focused on mitigating future flooding events through near-term actions that can feed into longer-term activities planned by Dearborn for flooding and prevention recovery. These improvements will be focused on delivering one or both of the following benefits to either expand the capacity of the sewer and water system or aid in delaying the entry of the stormwater into the sewer and water system. These mitigation efforts will increase resilience against future flooding. As part of its mitigation efforts, the city of Dearborn is very glad to be partnering with Salina Schools. In cities where open space is scarce, playgrounds have become increasingly looked upon as an opportunity to reduce flooding. Green infrastructure elements incorporated into a schoolyard can create a safe and usable area for children and others while reducing impermeable surfaces and managing stormwater runoff, thereby reducing the rate of volume of stormwater entering into the stormwater and sewer systems. The city will be using 280,000 in CDBG/DR funds to help fund this first phase of this green schoolyard at Salina Schools. This first phase will consist of a nature playscape for Salina Elementary Schools. The city of Dearborn is excited for this new partnership and project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Regina. And we're excited as well. As you know, our citizens utilize the school parks all the time. I mean, speaking on behalf of Salina alone, you drive by in the evening, you see so many families that are utilizing the school parks. So it's definitely a win-win with the school district and the city of Dearborn. Next, we have our partnership with Access. They've been longtime partners of the school district, of the city. And on behalf of Access, we have Asia Abad and Anissa Sahuba, who are here representing Access.
Good evening, everyone. As Mr. Ahmed said, Access and Dearborn Public Schools has had a longstanding partnership that we're really proud of. And you know, what I can tell you is when we had a visit by the Michigan Department of Education a couple of months ago, and they got an opportunity to talk to administrators and Ms. Faraj and Ms. Surur and Mr. Martin, they were incredibly appreciative of this relationship that we have in which we work so closely together and leverage so many resources and ensure that the kids get everything that they need that one entity cannot provide alone. And you know, in terms of this green schoolyards project, you've seen the beautiful plans, and you've heard about all of the benefits. But what I'm taking away with me is how much effort was put into ensuring that the partners come in and everyone is a part of this process, whether it's community organizations, the students, the parents, the families. And when you engage everyone and they have a voice in a project, they're that much more appreciative. And absolutely, all of these spaces are used. I am in the community every day, so I get to see it myself. It's a place where everyone congregates, and to have these beautiful plans that I'm sure will come together very soon is really, really nice to see. So congratulations to all.
Thank you.
And before we really got into it, we took a trip to Grand Rapids because we don't want to reinvent the wheel. We want to kind of see a successful plan that's already in place in another school district. And Grand Rapids had a wonderful partnership with the city and the schools. And you know, Mayor Abdullah Hamud was with us, Dr. Glenn Malako. So it was a great team. Access was part of that trip. So a great team effort. Thank you, Anissa. We're also proud of the Dearborn Education Foundation. Chad said he couldn't be here, or John, but I'm actually a board member. So I just want to say the behind-the-scenes that the Dearborn Education Foundation does to support the green schoolyards is incredible. And we truly thank them for all their efforts and their hard work and also helping us apply for many, many applications and grants. And then next, we also, and finally, we have for my part is CRSD, the Concerned Residents of South Dearborn. And we do have Samara Lookman here today with us. I'm actually also part of the CRSD, and it's a hard-working team that really just advocates for clean air and a great neighborhood. So thank you, Samara, for being here today, representing CRSD.
Hi, everybody. Samara Lookman, 30-plus-year resident of Dearborn. Last week, my mom was diagnosed with lung cancer. She'd never smoked a day in her life, but having lived in an area of the South End, which was a non-attainment, which means it's hazardous air to breathe, for over a decade as a result of industrial proliferation, urban renewal, environmental injustice, she's now diagnosed with that. The industrial proliferation has really resulted in not only some of the worst air in the area, but in the nation as a whole. And it's precisely for this reason that I want to take this opportunity to thank this team. The collaboration to bring clean air and green infrastructure projects that will not only support education, but actually clean the air, it's not only gonna help the students in learning, but it's also going to reduce the flooding that we've historically endured. It will also have an impact, not just like in the learning, but in the health of our children in the community. I just want to say that my work here is really dedicated to, as all of us are children, and specifically my firstborn Dean. He was born with a tumor at six months. He has high blood lead levels, not from drinking water, but from the air that he breathes by the age of four. He also has asthma by the age of six. So what I'm trying to impart to you is that the collaboration and the project that we're working on now is going to actually save lives. And before I get in trouble, Mama Alina, I love you too, but I want to thank everybody once more and just say, you know, hopefully, going forward, we are going to see this go, spread across the district to other schools. And thank you once again.
Thank you. And I'm just gonna add to this, too. Besides, I want you to think about, everybody has helped so much, and it's been countless, countless meetings. So besides your generous donation of time and money, but time, 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 you've done just a wonderful job. At this time, I would like At this time, I would like to have Mo Tenana come up. Mo, would you like to say something about Home Depot and their wonderful support? Thank you, Mo.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mahmoud Tenana and I am a manager at a local Home Depot. On behalf of the Home Depot Foundation and my local store, we are really excited to be supporting the Green Schoolyards program at Salina and intermediate schools. Over the last few years, our partnership with the Salina community has strengthened, most recently with the approval of a $7200 grant. Home Depot has always supported green space projects and teaching the youth life skills as we do with our monthly in-store workshops, along with off-site workshops in various schools. Ms. Stanley and Ms. Ahmed do an incredible job fighting for the students in the South End that have long been forgotten. As a product of Dearborn Public Schools, as a lifelong South Ender, I am so excited to be along for this journey. Thank you. And a Salina alumni. That's true.
Wild cats.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And now I'd like to introduce you of M. Dearborn, has just been a great partner with us. These two doctors, Dr. Natalie Sampson and Dr. Carmel Price, I'm telling you, they have just been words of wisdom for us. They know somebody who knows somebody and they bring students out to help. So thank you, and at this time, come on up. Thank you.
We're often confused as the same person and we don't get offended if you mix it up, so it's okay. So I cannot say enough good things about all of these humans in this space. I think as a professor of public health, we focus a lot on all of the things that Samara just said better than I can say, I can throw all the data at you, but we all know the realities of it. I think Carmel and I met Principal Stanley and Ahmed probably six, seven, maybe a little longer years ago, and immediately knew that we had a shared vision. In public health, our most pressing crisis is climate change, and how do you talk about that with young people in a way that doesn't just scare them and traumatize them? And so how beautiful is it to have a space where we can talk about it, but we can also dig deeper into our ecosystem, into our community, to learn about healthy food systems, to learn about stormwater management, and to play in a butterfly garden, right? I think that's the most powerful thing possible that, that these folks have done. And I will also just add that they've created so many opportunities for University of Michigan Dearborn students to do service learning, to learn from them, it's very much a mutual relationship. Eighty percent of our students stay in Dearborn and are future leaders in Dearborn. Many of our students come from Salina or other Dearborn Public Schools, and so it really is an honor and just kind of full circle for us to see this all play out. But yeah, I hope you continue to support them in supporting the district. I hope that this becomes contagious, it's really something special that I think other districts can learn from, so thanks for letting us be part of it.
Thank you. Thank you.
And the Intercultural Community Center in Dearborn supported GSY with a fundraiser last fall, so Lorelei Monaz and Karen Beck, on behalf of the district and the Board of Education, we thank you for your partnership. So is someone coming up to speak? Thank you. Thank you, friend.
Good evening. I'm Karen Beck and I'm a member of the Intercultural Community Center in Dearborn, and just to let you know, we are a newly formed nonprofit organization. We're a coalition of organizations and individuals in the Dearborn area who seek to raise cultural awareness and understanding through interaction in community projects and educational activities. And I think it was through the efforts of Lorelei that we became aware of what was going on at Salina, and we really wanted to see what we could do to help support their efforts. And the main thing that we wanted to do in our fundraiser, in addition to try and help raise funds for the project, was also to help promote the idea of the Green Schoolyard throughout the greater Dearborn area, also to help people in other parts of Dearborn know the wonderful things that were going on at Salina. We wanted to provide an opportunity for them to come and visit Salina and see firsthand the incredible accomplishments, the students and the teachers and administrators who've created a Green Schoolyard to some degree already. And then, as I said, another objective was to raise funds towards the project. And I guess lastly, just being there, you see how much that school, that school area and any school area in Dearborn is a place where the community gathers, and to make it a green space is really wonderful for the community, and we really hope to see it, the project continue at Salina and to grow into other areas of the community.
Thank you very much.
The Dearborn Community Fund, Emma Jean Woodard, who led the work on Pockets of Perception, that beautiful mural that is now on the wall of the community center, on behalf of the district and the Board of Education, we thank you, Emma Jean, for your partnership. Thank you.
We'll be short and sweet, but Sue mentioned the pop design team, which, by the way, is composed and comprised of students, many of them who are in our schools and our high schools, who give about six to eight weeks of their time during the summer months to work on art projects in the community that are lasting. When we heard about the Green Schools project, we immediately perked up and said, this sounds like something we'd want to be invested in, and indeed, we did. And we would like to think that the mural that resulted down on the schoolyard down there is an inspiration to, to continue forward with this wonderful Green Schools initiative. I think that it brings joy, it brings people down there specifically, that gives them a chance to see what else is down in the South End, and so we'd like to think that our mural, which by the way, we had to rent a high lift to do, so it was a bit challenging. We got through it and we like to think that it's one way that the community fund that supports initiatives that do make our community better, that it will be a lasting memory for all those that were involved in making it happen and those who will get to enjoy it going forward. We thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Sherry Pastula is here from Cleveland Cliffs Foundation, and Sherry, let me just see you. I just want to say thank you so much for your continued generous donations and support. Like I said, you were the seed that probably started us thinking about what more we could do, and so on behalf of the Board of Education and behalf of Dearborn Public Schools, we give many thanks to Cleveland Cliffs for what they have done as well. Thank you. And CMS Energy Foundation supported us with a generous grant, and on behalf of the district and the Board of Education, Adam Breitlinger is here from North Star Clean Energy. We thank you for your partnership, so come on up. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Adam Breitlinger. I'm happy to be here on behalf of North Star Clean Energy and the CMS Foundation. Our Dearborn Industrial Generation Plant is located near the Salina School. We are clean energy experts by trade, but we're also committed to supporting our local community, and we're so excited to support this project that will provide meaningful learning opportunities for students while strengthening local ecological systems. Over the years, our employees have had the privilege and opportunity to build a strong relationship with Salina Elementary by volunteering to read, providing tours of the plant to science classes, donating electronics equipment, and participating in holiday festivities. We are proud to support the Green Schoolyards initiative that will have a positive impact on students in our local community, and we're excited to see the project come to life.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And last but not least, the Exchange Club of Dearborn. So Board Trustee Pat Dambrosia, you get the last word, you represent Exchange. So on behalf of the Board of Education and the Dearborn Green Schoolyards, we give you so many thanks. Come on up. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be part of the Green School project, you know, from the perspective of being on the school board and the Dearborn, on behalf of Dearborn Exchange Club, we are a nonprofit organization and we support the Dearborn Public Schools all the time, so I'm happy to be part of the Dearborn Exchange Club and the board. Thank you.
Thank you. There were a few people that could not make it tonight, but we just wanted to quickly add this. LAHC, Levy Company, and the Koshas with Dearborn Sausage, and Friends of the Rouge have been just a tremendous support for us all. So as you can see, you know, we talk about it being a village and a community that it takes, this was a dream, and these people all made it come true. So look at these wonderful, wonderful people that are here on behalf of the children of Dearborn Public Schools, so thank you very, very much.
At this time, we'd like to take a picture with all of our sponsors and with the board, if, so I'm going to put everybody up here in this area, but while we are taking the picture, our viewers at home can take a few minutes and we'll play a video that our video department did regarding the Green Schools project. So we'll have that playing, and while that's playing, I'll ask everybody to come on up here. If you ride your AT...
David, I'm going to sit here and you won't see me, right? Oh, good. Really bringing the community together from all walks of life, from all parts of the city, coming together united on a mission to create more green spaces in our communities, in our parks, in our schools, because we truly believe that kids need to be out in nature, whether it's playing, learning, just taking a walk outside. You know what being outside in nature does to our, to our social, emotional wellbeing.
The Intercultural Community of Dearborn is hosting a fundraiser for us, for our Green Schoolyards initiative at the Salina Community, let's, to bring children back outdoors. So a while ago, they heard about our initiative and they were so excited about it, they wanted to help fund it. So the money tonight is earmarked for benches that we're going to have at, under our playscape and around different areas, but we just have a whole plethora of other things that we want to do and bring to the children here, so they can play outdoors, jump outdoors, and just feel the joy of nature.
We want to make this something that is available to everybody, that brings communities together, brings individuals together, and allows everyone who wants to contribute back to the community that they're from or that they want to serve in a meaningful way. And so I just want to thank you all again for joining us here today. This is the start of something amazing.
They are going to feel the passion, they are going to come back here and they're going to walk in the garden with these beautiful children, how important this garden is to their learning and a feeling part of this community.
Really just bring in awareness to our projects, kind of seeing a visual of what it looks like, kind of begin with the end in mind. We have beautiful art pieces up for auction that they can bid on to support our mission and our projects.
They're also going to go into a room where we're going to share the Green Schoolyards vision with them, because this is such a small part of the big five-year plan, 10-year plan that we have for turning this community really into a more beautiful jewel for everybody, not only the kids here, but for the families in this community as well. This garden is open before school starts, and the kids are out here pulling weeds, we have lettuce tacos. I mean, they are out here and they get so excited about this, they absolutely love it.
My name is Alzahra Abdul.
And I'm Gina Kahla, and we are eighth grade NJHS members.
This is a Salina Intermediate Garden where we spend a lot of time with. This is a unique part of Salina. The Garden Club helps out after school and Leadership Class takes, like, takes part of this in school. The community develops a lot of fruits and vegetables because of this garden. You want to show them?
Yeah, we have some mint, parsley, basil, strawberries, cucumbers, lettuce, and many other stuff, and we're hoping to get some more to grow around here too. We also have some trees around here, like peach trees and apple trees, so it actually makes us happy to see this because we know that we also help like participate in making it. And for the Garden Club, we actually get to take some of the produce home, and they do teach us recipes to make like with the stuff that we got. Over here in the back, we do have a butterfly garden, and there's also a bench that you can sit in. You'll see some butterflies come around, and we have some picnic tables, so if any classes or clubs would like to come and enjoy the outdoors while learning.
So all of this, what we're seeing today is really personal to me. I was born and raised in this community, grew up playing over here at Salina Park, Lepire Park. This is not just a school project or initiative, it really is working with the city of Dearborn to ensure that we have, you know, ample spaces for families, for students, for children to be in. And the city has been a great partner with us in terms of just, you know, meeting with us and ensuring that our dream comes true.
Before I go to Trustee Thorpe, I just want to say thank you, Amila from Salina, for the beautiful piece of art that we received.
You're welcome.
Trustee Thorpe, you have a question?
A couple of questions. It's a great presentation, it's amazing what we're, we're seeing on paper and seeing in some of these pictures of what it's going to look like. So my question is, impermeable surfaces were, were brought up or switching over to permeable, is there plans on, on doing things either with parking lots, or I think of part of the road that connects the two parking lots, like closing that off and, and getting rid of the pavement, i- is there any plans to do that either now or in a future phase?
Well, yes and no. Apparently, we had looked at getting rid of some of that cement that way, and it just was so cost prohibitive that at that point, that's not something we can do right now. However, we are losing some of the cement spaces that are in the kindergarten playground, and with all of the designs that we have, we are looking at getting rid of most of the cement in those areas and replacing it with permeable, permeable material. There is a plan for an eventual soccer field at the back of Salina, and I always get messed up where that is, it's by Dearborn Sausage.
Burnie, Burnie and Wyoming, the intersection.
Burnie and Wyoming, and breaking that up and doing that as well.
What's on school property, not, not the county, so.
Thank you very much.
That's where the soccer field is planned, you know, we're planning on, hopefully that's one of the future phases.
Okay. Any other questions? Trustee Moser?
I just want to commend you both, Ms. Stanley and Ms. Ahmed, for what you do. You brought a full team together. This is a true testament to what a true teamwork is by bringing partners into the schools and getting them involved and getting them excited about something that impacts our children every single day, and this is definitely a model for all of our schools to follow. I was actually in conversations with a Maples parent who's, who was very jealous of what you guys are doing, saying Maples doesn't have a lot of green space, and that's something that I'd like actually to request is, how much green space do we have for, for each individual school building? But this is, you, you are leading the way, Salina is, is definitely leading the way in this project, and I just want to commend you once again for the work that you do for bringing everyone together for this great cause.
Thank you, Trustee Moser, and you know what? We always say, when someone says, "Well, Maples doesn't have that," we always add the word "yet" after that.
Absolutely.
And so that's really our vision. Thank you.
Trustee Petakov?
Yeah, the concerns were brought up from some of the community members, and I know it's been asked for many years about the air quality issues in the community, and having the students outside. The goal is to help enhance the air quality and improve it with a lot of the plantings, but that's going to take some time. Is there any idea, because a tree canopy isn't going to grow overnight, and we all recognize that, is there a possibility, because I know there are monitoring equipment onsite at the school, that over time, we can start to compare and see what kind of improvements correlate to the things that are being done, and we can almost make it like a, a science instruction, have students monitor over time, and it won't be one year.
Absolutely.
It will take a long time, but can, can we see in real time that, that this is occurring because of the things that are being done now?
And thank you for that question, and that is the beauty of the partnership that we have with U of M Dearborn. We've got two of the smartest ladies that are all over this, that really want to help measure that. And our other goal is, is besides we want, it's not just that we want a beautiful playscape and clean air, we want to build environmental stewards. It's really important that our children, as part of their education, understand why we need to do this and their responsibility for taking care of the earth for the next generation that comes along.
And as you saw, we have many partners, we have Levy, we have Cleveland Cliffs, Consumer Energy, who are going to be working with us to also go more green in their facilities and to reduce emissions and to help, help with that, so over time, we will see improvements on both ends.
Well, I just think this would be a great teachable moment.
It is.
For the students and, and the community members. For the students and the community members themselves.
Absolutely.
To see it in actual numbers over the, over time.
Absolutely.
Of what this is going to do, and understand that it really does make a difference.
It really does. And we're going to be collecting that, because Dr. Chokol's going to help us write many more grants. And so we're going to need that data in order to convince other people to help us.
Great, thank you. Mr. Wall, you had a comment?
Yep, I just want to thank Principal Ahmed and Principal Stanley. They had a vision, and I gave them a lot of homework, putting that vision to paper, and then knowing we couldn't do it all at once, and putting it into phases. So I appreciate all the work you did to kind of bring this vision to fruition. So thank you.
Thank you. And we could not do this without the support of Central Office, let me tell you, because we've asked for many meetings, and you have been so generous with your time, and expertise. So thank you.
I do want to bring up Dr. Jill Chokol.
Did we forget you, Jill?
She is our green schools consultant and has put in so much time and dedication and so much effort into just bringing this into fruition. So thank you, from the start, from day one. So thank you so much. We appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great representation. Thank you.